I'd like to call the order of the meeting in the Village Board for December 17th, 2024. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here. Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's six.
At this time, we're going to move to public hearing presentation. Number one is a Bond Issuance Notification Act, BINA, public hearing for the intent to sell 2025 limited tax general obligation bonds for the Village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook County, Illinois, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,400,000. We will now move to the public hearing to discuss the intent to sell these bonds, which are the 2024, 2025 limited tax general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,400,000 for capital projects. Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's six.
The Finance Director would like to discuss the proposed bond issuance.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board. Every three years, the Village issues limited tax general obligation bonds. So we are required to hold a BINA hearing. This hearing provides an opportunity for all individuals who wish to be heard or have questions to present them at this hearing. So there was a notice published in the newspaper that this hearing was going to be held on November 28th, 2024, and now we can open it up to the public if anybody has any questions they would like to ask about the hearing.
If any persons would like to speak on the bond issuance, I ask that you please approach the podium and state your name and comment. Seeing none?
Yes, I got one. I got one question. Hi, my name is John Cox. I wanted to speak about something else, but just because you asked if I had, if anybody had a question. Other than the newspaper, do you guys publish, publicize this information anyplace else?
I believe, I believe it was on our website too, but Corey, can you confirm?
Yeah, it was posted on our website and in the Bensonville Independent.
Okay, this is just for, this for everybody else to know where to go look at this information.
Thank you for your question.
Any other questions? This would conclude the public comment on the bond issuance. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion to close the public hearing and the bond issuance?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, any discussion on this? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, the public hearing and the bond issuance is closed. We will now move to the public hearing on the Village's 2025 annual budget and community investment plan. The Village annual budget must be adopted before the beginning of the Village's fiscal year. The Village held a public meeting in November to discuss the proposed annual budget and will now hold a public hearing before considering the adoption of the annual budget. Village Clerk, for the record, would you please call the roll to open the public hearing on the Village's 2025 annual budget?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Frye?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's six.
The annual budget has been available for public inspection since November 20th, 2024. The 2024 annual budget and community investment program totals $82,649,400. The budget is balanced. It includes several infrastructure improvement projects and provides the all pension payments obligations of the Village for the next fiscal year. If any person would like to speak on the Village's 2025 annual budget and community investment plan, I ask that you please approach the podium and state your name and comment. Seeing none, this would conclude public comment on the Village's 2025 annual budget and community investment plan. Is there any further discussion on the 2025 annual budget? Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the Village's 2025 annual budget and community investment plan?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
President DeSimone?
Yes.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries, the public hearing is closed. We'll proceed with the regular order of business on the regular meeting agenda. Before we begin, I have open, uh, some opening remarks. When someone enters the public eye, they typically lose a significant amount of privacy as details about their personal life, opinions and activities can readily be accessed and discussed by the public and the media. This can be stressful and overwhelming, especially when dealing with negative commentary or personal attacks. As of late, it seems as though there are some who find fault in anything that is done by the Village, and it seems that every undertaking is met with negative scrutiny. Having been here eight years, I could tell you that there are a lot of good people living in the Village and a lot of good people working for the Village who do their best every day. Anyone who knows me is aware that I make myself available to all residents at any time and make time to discuss issues as they arise. I've attended every special event the Village has put on, and we put on more special events this year than ever before. The Board and I always put the interests of the Village first. The Village recently added several items to an upcoming election referendum that we felt were important and necessary and wanted to get feedback from the residents on how they want their government to operate. One of the referendums refers to the change in the form of village government. We feel this is important as a cost-saving measure. We feel that we can be more efficient and do more for the Village at less of a cost. Many other Illinois cities and towns have talked about instituting a 1% tax on groceries because they can't afford to lose that revenue that the governor removed without raising taxes. We have gone eight years without raising taxes, and that revenue is important to us too. But we want to give the Village residents their voice. These referendums will provide us direction on topics that will shape the future of this Village. I want to remind you that I lived here long before I entered village government. My family and I have been a Bensonville resident for 23 years. I've watched the prior village government going in a different direction and felt that I could do better. I hope you agree with me. In light of the Village's successes, Bensonville continues to attract new businesses, including Gem Car Wash, Cilantro Taco Grill, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Aria Apartments, Taste of Greek Food, Chao Isabella, Extra Space Storage, and our second dome, which is going to be run by Energy Volleyball, and that's just to name a few. We are also currently working to update our website, and we'll have information on these referendums after the first of this year. Please make sure you educate yourself on them, and I encourage you to vote as your voice matters. Thank you. We'll move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the Board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Yes, uh, we have two. John Cox?
Good evening, and thank you for opening up with that, you know, comment. It, that, that's kind of what I wanted to speak about. I think you guys are doing a good job, very good job. I didn't vote for the three trustees. I talked to Frank at one of the meetings at the park, and it was enlightening. And I, I encourage all citizens to take the chance to, you know, speak to these people when they're out there and the public. But as far as a referendum question about managerial form of government, I didn't really understand that. It's my understanding that, that the Village President and the trustees are elected officials. Any other position in our municipality is appointed. And so I don't think that, uh, you know, the public's comments are really necessary on that aspect. But if it has to do with, you know, recovering money and raising, raising you guys' salary or whatever else, I think you guys should be paid fairly for your work. And, uh, I just think that you guys need to talk to, to these people a bit more, to the public a bit more, and the public needs to engage with you guys a bit more. Otherwise, good, you know, good job, good luck, and, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. McCullough?
Good evening, Chris McCullough, resident of Bensonville. Over the past few weeks, since Village President DeSimone discovered he would be running uncontested in the April 2025 election, we've observed an incredible attempt of a power grab with the benefit of a financial windfall to Mr. DeSimone, and it seems to be supported by his Board. Village President DeSimone, you have established a pattern of greed and self-service. In 2015, you were elected trustee and earned $2,400 per year. In 2017, you became Village President at $6,000 per year. In 2021, you gave yourself a raise to $38,000 per year. In 2025, you will receive another raise to $55,000 per year. But when you fired Village Manager Evan Summers, you opportunistically positioned yourself for a raise to $172,000 per year. So I have here something that we can look at. This is play money. $172,000 per year. There it is. This stack of play money and $100 bills represents $172,000 from us, the taxpayers. Where do we go from here? Will you want even more raises in the future? It is time to say no to you, Village President DeSimone. Mr. DeSimone, the Village of Bensonville is not the Bank of Frank. Village President DeSimone, these are your words from December 4th, spoken by you.
Unfortunately, there are some in our community trying to spread misinformation. They are claiming that the Village Board and my decision to ask residents to decide if the managerial form of government should be retained was a great secret. For over eight years, this idea has been discussed. Any claim to the contrary is just plain untrue and being made to serve political self-interest.
I submitted the following FOIA request to the Village of Bensonville on December 4th, December 5th, 2024. Any and all communication, for example, text messages, email, phone records, transcripts, teleconferencing records and transcripts, face-to-face meetings, to and/or from and/or between Village Manager Evan Summers, Village President DeSimone, Jay Dalachondro, Village Attorney Joe Montana, Village Clerk Nancy Quinn, Trustee Carmona, Trustee Franz, Trustee Frye, Trustee Lomax, Trustee Perez, and Trustee Panacola regarding the form of government and/or the change of form of government in the Village of Bensonville between January 1, 2016 through December 4, 2024. After a search of Village files, what I received was the following. After a search of Village files, there were no records found responsive to your request. Trustees?
Time's up.
Have you? Under Rule 4, you can grant some additional time.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 19, 2024 special Village Board meeting?
You have a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the November 26th, 2024 special Village Board meeting? Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any modification to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the December 4th, 2024 special Village Board meeting?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, the minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $7,523,801.31. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, and the warrant is approved. There are no items of the consent agenda. Under administration is a resolution granting the advice and consent of the Village Board of Trustees to the Village President's appointment of Lisa Banavitz as Village Treasurer. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion? Dan, you want to discuss this?
Yeah, the Village has a treasurer that's appointed. It's usually the Finance Director. Lisa Banavitz is our new Finance Director, extremely qualified, and I would recommend that she be the Village Treasurer.
Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, and the resolution is approved. A resolution appointing an authorized agent to Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, IMRF. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Same thing. Again, there's a representative from the Village that interacts with the IMRF fund, and we would recommend that she be appointed as well.
Any other questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Number three is a resolution designating the signatories of the Village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
The signatories are people who sign our manual checks, and typically it's the President, one of the trustees, which is Rosa Carmona, and the Finance Director, Lisa Banavitz. That's who staff would recommend.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, and the resolution approved. Four is a resolution authorizing the procurement of copiers and printers for the Village's Equipment Replacement Fund not to exceed $130,000. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Dan, would you like to discuss this one?
Yeah, the Village has an equipment replacement fund where wearing parts and things that wear out are replaced over time. So typically, a quarter of everything we have is replaced every year. So every four or five years, someone would get a new computer on their desk. This particular line item talks about our copiers. Our copiers are old. We used to lease them. They're now out of lease, and they're starting to break down and fall apart. So we went and got competitive bids, and one of the bids was extremely competitive, and we're going to recommend that we move forward with it. So that's what this line item would cover.
Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. On the same line, we have a resolution authorizing the procurement of computer technology-related items from the Village's Equipment Replacement Fund not to exceed $159,662. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is also part of the Equipment Replacement Fund to replace desktop computers and laptop computers. What we did, though, is we procured one, and we're testing it because it's a new model with a new processor, and we want to make sure that it meets all of our needs and is compatible with all the software the Village uses before we purchase any more. If this one does not work, then we would purchase another one, test it, make sure it works, and then move forward with the purchase.
And all this was previous, in the previous budget that we just have to expend before the budget ends, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Six is a resolution adopting the 2025 meeting schedules for the Village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
There's a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
This is just the schedule of the Board meetings and the Committee of the Whole meetings for the entire year. The Village always puts it out and presents it in advance so everyone knows when they can attend the meetings.
Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution adopting the State of Illinois holiday schedule for the Village of Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, discussion, Dan?
We did a study on surrounding towns and the available holidays that they give their employees, and we chose to adopt the State of Illinois list because we do a lot of business with the State of Illinois. Our computers are tied into theirs. We do a lot of business with them, and, and we think this would be the fairest way to approach it.
Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Eight is a resolution of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook County, Illinois, providing the submission of an advisory referendum question of whether the Village of Bensonville shall impose a 1% local grocery tax. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
This is the advisory referendum that the Mayor referred to in his opening remarks. The Governor recently took away the 1% tax that municipalities used to collect, but he made it optional for the municipalities to add it back in. The Mayor decided to put it to the voters and let the voters decide how their government will operate. So this would decide if that 1% tax is added back in, or we look for another funding source.
Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, and the resolution is approved. Nine is a resolution of Village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook County, Illinois, providing the submission of an advisory referendum question of whether the Village Bensonville shall continue to charge a fee to license a domestic pet. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
This is the other referendum that was put on the ballot. The Mayor recently took away the vehicle stickers in the town so people don't have to buy vehicle stickers for their cars. An extension of that was people have to buy a license for their dogs. But what we found out in talking to people is many people don't buy it, some do, some don't. So we decided to put this to the vote as well and see if this would be something that could be done away with, again, to save the residents' money.
Any questions from our Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Just to show how low it is, it's like $1,000 a year, right? Something like that.
Yeah, not much is collected from this.
The motion carries, the resolution is passed. Community Economic Development, one is an ordinance granting special use permit, motor vehicle repair and/or service at 477 Thomas Drive, Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Curtis, are you taking this one?
Yep. Yeah, so advanced transport, so you can a special use permit, motor vehicle repair and/or service. Uh, it's really the back half of this, uh, this kind of multi-tenant industrial facility. They're basically a trucking company. The very end of it, in the rear, there's one bay that they service, they will be servicing their own vehicles on. So it's already an established kind of repair bay on there. It was used previously from the past tenant. Um, they will not be working on outside vehicles. It's only their own, uh, their fleet. Um, so that was, and that's basically a requirement of the CDC approval. So the CDC did recommend approving this one 7-0.
Any questions from the Board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
Motion carries, the ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance granting a special use permit vocational school at 6 South Addison Street in Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Curtis?
Yeah, so this is an exciting one. Um, so the, the space over at, it's just across the street, 6 South Addison. We recently had TLC, the, the Learning Center, move to another location. So had, uh, you know, some big vacancy over here that's going to get backfilled pretty quick. Um, the, the operators here are in part from the Fifth Ave Salon and Barbershop, The, the operators here are in part from the Fifth Ave Salon and Barbershop, also across the street, kind of kitty corner in the, in the, in the building here, right at kind of that intersection. So they're opening a salon and barber, barber shop, school, it's a vocational school. So it's a special use in our code. So it'll be bringing students downtown, which is a good thing. That's a, you know, obviously people that come down and spend, you know, money in the downtown as well. But also they're getting training and they've, they've got a real commitment to the community. So Oro Salido PMU Internacional is the, is going to be the vocational school. Got a great team, mayor met with them, we've met with them several times, very professional, business plan, everything's in the, in the packet if you guys are interested. But it's, it's an exciting opportunity, fill a big space downtown. Community Development Commission did vote seven oh to recommend approval on this one.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance granting a variation solar energy collection system, ground mounted systems location at nine fifty through nine ninety Supreme Drive, Bensville. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Curtis?
Okay, so these next two are for solar energy mechanical equipment. So Prologis is, is doing solar kind of fields on all their industrial properties in the village. It's a, run through a state grant. It's basically a community solar project. The, the industrial facilities don't actually use the solar, they, they offer it for sale to the community. So Bensville residents will be able to buy solar in their own community. Well, along with the, the panels, which don't need anything special, any sort of special approvals, they're on the roof, they're kind of hidden. But the mechanical equipment on the ground sometimes does. So this, the next two properties are both on corner lots, so they have two street frontages. So technically, the mechanical equipment is in one of the front yards, which requires a variation. Now, this front yard on the, on this property is along the Thorndale Avenue front yard, it's kind of hidden, that's where the new tollway is running through. There weren't a whole lot of issues with this one, so as long as they were screening it, the staff was comfortable and recommended the approval here. And the CDC felt as well recommending to approve seven oh.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Four is an ordinance, actually, this ordinance, we're going to be remanding back to the CDC. But it's an ordinance denying a variation for solar energy collection system, ground mounted systems location at ten ten Foster. So I need a motion to remand this back to the CDC for further consideration.
You have a motion to remand?
We have a second.
Second.
There being a motion and a second, do you want to discuss?
Yeah, I'll walk through why we're doing this. So we actually recommended denial on this one. The, the equipment was right out on Foster Avenue. They only got a little bit of space on this property, not a lot of green space. We didn't like the location, there's potential of future sidewalks coming through here, it just wasn't a great spot for the equipment. It is a tight site, we told them to go back to the drawing board. So instead of getting a denial and not being able to, to do this work for another year, they're asking to go get remanded. They've actually come with a different proposal, just submitted this week. So we will go back to CDC. The variance is still the same request, it'll be for the front yard, they're just moving it back into the parking spaces back there, basically. So we'll have that reviewed at CDC. If we're comfortable, we'll come back next meeting with a recommendation.
Any questions from, from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
I'm saying yes to.
To remanding it back, yes.
So yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Five is an ordinance approving tax increment financing incentive by and between the Village of Bensville and Edge, or an Energy VBC Incorporated for property located at one zero zero five Commerce Court in Bensville. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, we have a discussion.
Yeah, in slight correction here, we don't technically have an ordinance. We're looking for basically an approval of the application, sort of a recommendation to move forward with legal to draft a redevelopment agreement. So what we'll do is, after your blessing, we'll have legal, work with their legal, come up with a redevelopment agreement, and then we'll bring that to the next board meeting. So right, right now, what we're saying is, we, we did the analysis, you know, we just didn't have time to get the redevelopment agreement in place. But we want to bring it forward and get the, the, your thoughts on our request for the two hundred thousand, essentially. So, so Energy VBC is the, this is another one the mayor mentioned earlier in his opening remarks. This is the second dome across from the Bowdome at Grandin County Line. So very exciting project, we got a great user coming in. It's basically hard courts, so think, you know, basketball courts, similar, kind of gym floors. But they're a volleyball user for the most part. They had an existing facility, they were up north, and they were looking to expand. So they're, they're coming down here into the dome. Very exciting users, we've met with them several times. I mean, they're raring to go, they're talking about having this thing up and running here in the next couple of weeks. So it's, it's, it's really exciting, talking tournaments, trainings, you know, it's, it's USA volleyball affiliations, it's, it's a, it's a big deal. And we're really excited to have them coming in. So part of their business plan is there's a gap in the funding. So they had to go out and get an SBA loan to be able to do this project. TIF funds, you know, there's certain eligible costs, and so we're, we're talking some professional costs and then interest on the loan are eligible. We estimate there's roughly probably, probably one point eight million in estimated eligible expenses. We're saying about ten percent of that is what we're willing to support in the project, and they're comfortable with that as filling their gap. So that's why we're recommending two hundred thousand dollars in TIF incentive to help fill that gap and get them up and running and be able to operate, you know, without having the stress of, I guess, you know, so much of that debt and, you know, backload it onto their business from the get-go. So that's the request, the, the Grand Avenue TIF District has a lot of funds available, so, you know, more than enough to cover this expense. So what we'll do is, if we get your approval tonight, we'll get, we'll have Joe get on it, he'll work with their legal, and we'll come back to the next meeting with the redevelopment agreement. Now, the redevelopment agreement will have several aspects, more than just the TIF funding. It'll have clawbacks and things like that of, of how this TIF funding works, when do we pay it out, things like that, too. So there'll be more detail at the next meeting, but we wanted to basically offer, authorize the amount. But the analysis is all in there, I did a TIF analysis, there's economic analysis in there if you're interested. But this is a very exciting project and we're, we're excited to get this off the ground.
It's about a ten to twelve million dollar build, right?
Yeah, overall, if you're talking both the, the actual development of the dome, I mean, we're talking just energies expenses going into this. I mean, they got, they got some two million dollars of their own expenses. The development of the dome is probably another, yeah, eight million dollars worth of expenses. So there's, this is a big, big investment. I mean, the, the amount we, we get back in just property tax revenue is, is impressive, just from the get-go. So, so it's a very worthy project.
Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Six is an ordinance approving amendments to the administrative adjudication code. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Curtis, I know we've been trying this for a while.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is a long time coming, we're happy we could finally get this, get this going. So the way, so adjudication, I guess if you don't know, for, at least for my department, it's, you know, we, we handle basically all sort of municipal code enforcement. You know, I got inspectors out there on the ground, and we can issue correction notices. We don't really call them tickets, they're, they're correction notices, they get a certain amount of time to correct it. If not, we would bring them to our local adjudication court. The way our code has been written is we only have a certain window we can bring them into our adjudication court. Well, Illinois law recently changed, now they allow non-home rule communities to operate more like home rule communities. So we're updating the code to reflect that, and we'll basically have a constant ticket writing window. So much like police can basically write tickets whenever, my department will be able to write tickets, you know, more often, basically. It just, it's a, it's a much cleaner way to get enforcement on issues that we're having trouble getting enforcement on. And it's, it's really tough sometimes for us trying to do a correction notice, and then you're kind of delayed sometimes thirty, sixty days on how the timing works out on those windows. So this is really just to update the code. It cleans up a lot of other aspects of the code, too, but really it's because of Illinois law changing and then us wanting to go with a, with a constant ticket writing window.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Seven is an ordinance establishing the South Industrial Special Service Area. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, who's, Curtis, you can handle this one, too?
Yeah, we'll probably team it a little bit if we need to, but, so we are proposing a South Industrial District, TIF, or a Special Service Area. We did something similar earlier this year with the Sesame Street one in the East Business District. So the South Industrial District is similarly, the, the infrastructure down there is, you know, reached the end of its useful life. It, it needs some serious improvements. So we have a grant available to go towards the project, but unfortunately, that doesn't, that doesn't cover enough. So the village is looking to basically fund half of the cost here, and the remaining half, we would like to establish an SSA. We would bond out towards the SSA, and then the property owners that are affected in this district would have an additional tax on their properties to pay back the SSA. So the property owners you hear are mostly industrial, there are a, a small handful of residential that are in this district. But this is just to say we're establishing it, it basically starts a timeline. We would have to come back to the board in January to actually establish it, to pass another ordinance. There is a possibility that things change before there, before then, we're still talking about it, but at this point, we want to get this going. This is a planned twenty twenty-five project. Joe can get into it if you have any questions about, you know, what actually is involved, but there's a lot going on here. Like I said, the roadway is in, in pretty bad shape up there, and it's, it's, what, we said? Nine point?
Nine point four million.
Nine point four million dollar project, so it's a, it's an extensive project, that the village is, like I said, is willing to pay half of it. But the, the rest of it, we're saying, the businesses that are utilizing this roadway should be the ones, you know, paying for it, helping, you know, instead of the residents, instead of the actual residential, you know, property owners paying for this. So this gets it going, again, we would have to come back to actually establish it, there would be public hearings, there would be other things that have to happen, and things could change before then, but this, this gets the ball rolling.
But we have to get the ball rolling because the grant has a time on it, too, right?
Yeah, it's a DCEO grant, a Department of Economic Opportunity Grant, three million dollars. It has a sunset date of twenty twenty-six on it, so we're really trying to get this project done in twenty twenty-five, so we can get the paperwork done and close the grant out before it expires.
How does it affect the residential homes on the left side here?
The residential homes would also be subject to the tax, on their tax bill, for their percentage of the overall EAV based on their, their buildings.
And those are all condos, right?
Correct.
All the apartments. Any other questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Moving on to finances, ordinance adopting the annual budget for the Village of Bensville for the fiscal year commencing January one, twenty twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Lisa, do we have any discussion?
I'd just like to have some final comments on the budget. The twenty twenty-five calendar year budget outlines a comprehensive and fiscally responsible financial plan, reflecting the village's commitment to disciplined spending and alignment with its long-term vision. The budget demonstrates a continuous focus on the community growth and ongoing improvements. This budget will be carefully monitored throughout the upcoming year to ensure that it supports the board's strategic objectives and prioritizes the best interests of the community.
Any questions about the budget? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Thank you, Lisa, and your team for the hard work on getting the budget organized, thank you. This motion carries and the ordinance is passed. Two is a resolution establishing the refuse and recycling and yard waste collection services rates with Republic Services for the Village of Bensville effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Lisa, are you taking this one, too?
Yes, I am. So the village has a contract with Allied Waste Services of North America, which everybody knows as Republic Services. And this contract has a four percent price increase for calendar year twenty twenty-five. So staff recommends adopting the established rates for refuse and recycling and yard waste collection services. They are listed in Attachment A of Ordinance Number thirty-three dash twenty twenty-three. These rates will be effective January first, and this is strictly a pass-through charge, so the village isn't making any money on this contract at all. The village is applying the same rates that is charged by its vendor to its refuse service to its customers.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. On the Public Works, resolution authorizing the execution of the PACE Para Transit Local Share Agreement for Participation in twenty twenty-five Ride to Page Program and Purchase Order in the Amount of fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second. Being a motion and a second, Joe?
Yep, so back in twenty nineteen, the village began offering the Ride to Page Program to our senior residents and our disabled residents. The program basically offers twenty-four seven bus or cab service throughout the DuPage County area. We've also extended that area to some of the Cook County area as well, depending on the use of the service. Fees will remain at two dollars is a base fee, plus one dollar per mile for the residents to take, who benefit from the program. We currently have two hundred and sixty residents who are enrolled in the program. Before you tonight are the annual agreement and a purchase order to PACE. PACE is the agency that actually runs the Ride to Page Program. We anticipate about a fifty thousand dollar cost to the village as our component to belong to the program. Again, the residents will pay for a portion of their rides while the village subsidizes the rest. We also do receive a subsidy through the PACE Para Transit Program. Again, our estimated cost after all the subsidies is about fifty thousand dollars, is something we budgeted in the twenty twenty-five budget that was just approved two minutes ago. So staff does recommend approval.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Two is a resolution authorizing the twenty twenty-five approved vendor list for village departments utilizing parts, equipment, and services. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So the village's purchasing policy requires that any purchase or project in excess of ten thousand dollars is supposed to go to the village board for approval. The work that requirements of a lot of our village departments requires that we purchase things throughout the year that maybe not as a project, but in aggregate may exceed that ten thousand dollar limit. So think of things like tools and parts buying them at Menards. I can't, I'm not going to come to the village board every time I go to Menards to buy a tool, but over the entirety of the year, we do expect that our parts and materials may exceed the ten thousand dollar limit. So what this ordinance does, or this resolution before you does, is kind of establishes a list of twenty-two different vendors that multiple departments use throughout the year, that again, no individual purchase or project will exceed ten thousand dollars, but in aggregate over the year, we will likely spend more than ten thousand dollars on, on these vendors. We started this practice a few years back, we feel it's a good accounting practice, transparent practice to do. So what we will do at this point is, if this is approved, then we can purch, we can create purchase orders for these vendors in these amounts and draw down on that amount. If we do see that we will be exceeding any of these limits throughout the year, we would come back to the village board to amend the approved vendor list in the amount over what is approved tonight. So staff does recommend approval.
And by chance we don't spend that money, we get it reversed, correct?
It just stays in the account, yes.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, trusty Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing the execution of purchase order to Al Warren Oil Company Incorporated to write fuel tank rental and fleet fueling services and then not to exceed an amount of two hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, Joe?
Yeah, so the, the village purchases bulk fuel at a cost benefit to purchasing retail from local gas stations. Purchased typically is based off the OPUS rack, or average rack rate. OPUS stands for the Oil Price Information Service, so this is kind of the going rate that, that gas stations pay for their gas. We entered into an agreement with Al Warren Oil back in twenty twelve for purchase of our fuel based off of that OPUS rack rate. In twenty fifteen, they actually reduced their amount to OPUS rack rate, plus, we actually played the OPUS rack rate plus a overhead and profit margin. In twenty twelve, they reduce, in twenty fifteen, they reduced that amount to ten cents over the OPUS rack rate. They have kept that price consistent for the last ten years. We're looking at purchasing our fuel through Al Warren again this year at that same rate. Again, fuel does fluctuate as the market fluctuates, so this is everybody's way of making sure that we're paying our fair share, we're not guessing as to what we're paying for fuel. We also rent our gas tanks, our overhead gas tanks, from Al Warren Oil, as well as our fuel software. So that's all kind of built into that overhead and profit ten cents per gallon. We have bid this out in the past, and Al Warren has always come in as, as the low, the low bidder. So it's our recommendation to approve this resolution. We expect about two hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in fuel for all our departments this year.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, resolution approved. Four is ordinance designating certain property as surplus and authorizing disposal of the same. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, discussion?
So this ordinance declares nine different vehicles as surplus that are no longer needed for the operations within the Police Department, Public Works Department, CED Department, and the Rec Department. These nine vehicles have all been replaced this year, so the old vehicles are looking to surplus as they're no longer leading, we, needed. We will dispose of these in the most economical way possible, typically it is through auction in one of our auction sites. So staff does recommend approval of the ordinance.
Question from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Five, resolution authorizing execution of purchase order to Primastar for the Edge Two Ice Rink Compressor Number One rebuild, and then not to exceed an amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
Yeah, so there are three different compressors at the Jefferson Ice Rink. These compressors run twenty-four seven, three sixty-five to make sure that our ice stays frozen. We do pull that, one of them out of service each year to do a complete rebuild. So this is compressor number one at the Jefferson site. We did go out for proposals, saw three proposals. Primastar Mechanical Services submitted the lowest proposal for the rebuild in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. This is a budgeted expense in twenty twenty-five, and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from our board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Six, resolution authorizing execution of preventative maintenance agreement for Edge and John Street Ice Rinks with Primastar Mechanical Services, and then not to exceed an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Being a motion and a second, do we have discussion?
So we just approved the rebuild of one compressor, but we have six other compressors throughout our two different ice rinks. So this is a contract with Primastar. Again, we did vent this out through a proposal process to do the routine and preventive maintenance on those compressors, and also our dehumidification system at both locations. So ongoing maintenance, routine maintenance that we do, we hire a contractor to do, because they're the experts in dehumidification and compressors. The total amount for the two locations combined is thirty-five thousand dollars, so staff does recommend approval.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution authorizing execution of a final balancing change order number one with Aqua Contractors Corporation for the twenty twenty-three CDBG Brown Gate Subdivision Improvement Project for an increase of one hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred two dollars, forty cents, for a revised final contract amount of two million fifty-six thousand, four hundred two dollars, forty cents. four hundred two dollars, forty cents, is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, Joe, we have discussion?
Yeah, so the Brown Gate subdivision is up in the northern residential area of town, we concluded a project this year that included the installation of ductile iron water main, a lot of storm sewer went in there, we rebuilt all the roadways, new sidewalks, new street lights as well. This was a project that we were awarded six hundred thousand dollars of community development block grant, uh, funds, grants through the DuPage County administers that program. The original contract was awarded to Aqua Contractors in the amount of one point nine million dollars back on February twenty-seventh of this year, the final contract cost came in at just over two million dollars, two million fifty-six dollar, fifty-six thousand, four hundred and two dollars, that's an increase of one hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred and two dollars for the project. The increases were basically attributed to field conditions that resulted in a, a lot more landscape restoration in Mohawk Park, due to some of the things we found out there, we found some underground storage tanks and had to expand some of our, our work to help the school district work on cleaning that up. There were some aggregate base course issues that were not anticipated as part of the project, additional sidewalk removal and replacement, drainage structures and storm sewers, additional fire hydrants, sanitary sewer service adjustments, as well as some driveway replacements that were done in concrete versus asphalt, so, in, in total, it was about a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars additional in the cost. The project is now complete, we're looking to do final closeout of this project with DuPage County, so staff does recommend approval of this final change order.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's fine.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Eight, resolution authorizing execution of a final balancing change order number one for Schroder Asphalt Services Incorporated for the twenty twenty-four MFT pavement patching program for an increase of twenty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars, for a revised final contract amount of two hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars, fifty cents, is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, discussion, Joe?
So again, this is our annual pavement patching program, we do utilize MFT funding for this general maintenance program, so we allocate two hundred thousand dollars with IDOT each year for our patching program. We entered into a contract with Schroder Asphalt Services in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty cents back in August of this year. We did add some pavement patching at the direction of the village manager, some of those were in the alley between Center and Addison and Wood and Green, again, these just added to, some of the patches added to the cost to the project, so twenty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar change order puts us over the two hundred thousand dollars, so we will come back to you at the beginning of the year with a final MFT resolution so that we can adjust the allocation that we did, but the project is done, patches look great, and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?[1386.61]